Um, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee for Tuesday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, here in the Abington Middle High School Library. Um, if I could please ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To sympathize with the United States of America and through the Republic for what which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I first want to see if there's anybody who would like to speak before we get started. Um, and with that in mind, I know this is security agenda on the agenda. I'll ask some questions during that, uh, but it's not going to become a public forum. Um, lots of Q and A back and forth. The superintendent is always available to answer any particular questions that need to come up. So feel free to address them that way. So if that's your question, we can wait until after Chief Delpapa speaks and if there's anything specific. Um, I would just ask you to address the questions through us and not directly to him. That's all. Is there anybody else who would like to talk about anything else, though, before we get started? Okay, um, let me do minutes first. Sure, alright. Um, first, I'm just gonna ask for a reading approval of the minutes from our meeting on May twenty-fourth. And whenever you're, whenever he's ready to look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I can second.
All in favor of passing the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next up, we are gonna skip around on the agenda really quick. Uh, Chief, I'm gonna ask you to come up. Uh, Dr. Robbins is not here yet, so I'm gonna ask you if you wanna do your segment now. If that works for you or for Chris.
So, yeah, if I could just leave it out as you, as you come up, Chief. Um, first off, I wanna thank, uh, Chief Delpapa for coming and being here with us. Uh, I wanna, I wanna thank him for more than that. I wanna thank him and his department for the collaboration. Heck, I mean, when, when you started, I think we were two or three weeks into your tenure here. We had to evacuate the building and we had, you know, somebody made a threat that was bogus. Um, but you have, I think, every emergency responder within, you know, a ten mile radius here, you know, making with dogs, making sure we were completely safe before you cleared the building. And, um, although there are better ways to start, uh, working with you, uh, just appreciate, uh, the police department's responsiveness. Because I can tell you, um, when, when we call them, they come quickly. So, um, we were asked to talk a little bit about safety and security. Obviously, this is all post, um, terrible incidents in our country that don't seem to stop. And sadly, uh, you know, they, they took place the years before this. This is not the first time that, uh, schools have had to wrestle and shoulder this. So it was a number of years ago, um, we began what's called the Alice Training. Uh, you're gonna hear more about that tonight, um, just how deeply we've, we've gone into that. You're gonna hear more about some of the, uh, things we were able to do with, uh, cameras, uh, and, um, locks and doors. You'll hear about the collaboration with the police department, about the police department's doing. And then people are gonna have to leave some of it short because there is some information that we don't feel comfortable sharing because anyone planning to do harm to us, um, the more we talk about those things, the more advantage we give them. And then, but there are some things that are, um, still things that we can share, that are important to share with people. One of the most important things to this, though, is it's ongoing. It, you're never done. I don't think anybody feels, uh, ever safe or completely safe. Um, but that's obviously what keeps you the safest because you're ever, you're ever vigilant. So you'll hear about some of those things tonight. So really, it's, um, Felicia or the Chief? Chief goes first. You're already, you're already here, you're already up. Do you mind?
If you'd like to use the podium?
If you wouldn't mind, the microphone hooks into cable.
First of all, thank you for the kind words, appreciate that. Second of all, pleasure to be here. Just wanna let everybody know that, uh, school security is in the forefront of the department's mind. Uh, it was on my mind when I took this department over. Uh, since taking over the department, we've, uh, made some equipment upgrades uh, to help address a threat like the one faced in Uvalde, Texas. We're also gonna be conducting some regional training this summer, um, to address threats like that. Um, as the superintendent said, I can't get into specifics about the type of equipment and training that we have to address such threats, but, um, you can be confident that, uh, we are well-equipped and trained, uh, to address, uh, an incident like that, should we be unfortunate to face. Just gonna keep that real brief. And if anybody has any questions, we'll, we'll share these with the staff.
Yeah, Felicia, did you wanna add?
So I have a number of items that I can speak to and then maybe we can do questions jointly at the, at the end. So recently, uh, the Abington Public Schools, uh, using, uh, capital, um, fund money from last year, upgraded and put fob locks on all of our school, in all of our schools. So Woodsdale, Beaverbrook, and two oh one have key fob entrances, so there's no reason to keep dock doors ajar, um, or to keep, keep them open at all because staff members can fob in and out during the school day. That being said, we do ask staff to be aware and check on doors, um, as they walk in by them. They're checked regularly by school personnel, um, to ensure that they're kept closed throughout the day. Um, as Peter spoke about, a number of years ago, the Abington Public Schools, in conjunction with the Police Department, adopted the Alice model of response to an intruder into, into school buildings. And Alice stands for, um, alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. And you'll see those signs, um, up throughout our school buildings. And our, depending on age, students are taught, uh, the Alice, um, acronyms. Each staff member in Abington has gone through Alice training and all new staff members in Abington watch about an hour video, um, on Alice. Then each year, our staff does a refresher, an e-learning module through Alice. Um, and, uh, as a refresher, excuse me, as a refresher, um, just to keep us all up to date. Each school addresses Alice a little bit differently depending on the age group. For example, at the younger grades, the teachers are more, um, more in charge of the response. And the night, one of the things, nice things, I guess, if you will, about Alice is that it empowers the adults or empowers the young adults to make decisions based on the information that they have. So at the lower levels, students are taught that if they're told to evacuate or to leave the building, they run. You just run. At the upper grades, at the high school, for example, they do tabletop exercises using various scenarios. And so the students within the classroom, uh, speak about what they would do if they were told that there was, if they were informed, which is one of the Alice, um, letters, if they were informed that there was an intruder in the gym lobby. And if they were in a, uh, academic classroom, they would know that they were far enough away that they could evacuate safely. If they were in that area, they may make a decision to barricade. And we've practiced barricading in, um, in classrooms. Different grade levels have practiced barricading. So depending on the age group and depending on the scenario that's practiced, um, students are equipped with decision-making, um, tools. The other aspect of Alice that we also talk about is it's not just specific to a school. It could be something, those strategies that you could use in other places should there be, um, an intruder. Whether it be, you know, a church, grocery store, store, uh, that, those are also strategies. Next year, we plan to continue, uh, to do at least two Alice drills per year, which is what we've done, um, over the last number of years. We plan to devote a half-day of professional development to Alice and school safety. In conjunction, um, with our insurance company, we do a risk assessment and they walk our buildings with us. And they've made suggestions such as, um, removing high bushes from, in front of the frolio a number of years ago. That was one of the suggestions from the insurance company. So to mitigate risk. Additionally, before school starts, the, um, building inspector, the fire department, maintenance walk each of our buildings to ensure that all of the doors appropriately lock, that doors and the fire doors, um, close appropriately when an alarm is, um, uh, activated. Um, they're also looking to make sure lightning is appropriate, that windows close and lock, that our classroom doors close and lock. And that's done prior to school so that those things can be, um, addressed before we have students in the building.
Great, thank you. So I just.
I just wanted to jump in briefly. So nobody ever wants to encounter the kind of situation they had in Uvalde, but the best way to protect yourself against it or prepare for it is to start off with facility security. Felicia just touched on, uh, proper equipment, both here at the schools with the cameras, the equipment for the first responders, the training. The schools have conducted Alice training bi-annually. We're gonna be conducting active shooter training bi-annually. And then like the superintendent said, this is a continual process that will continue year after year. And the success of that is gonna be based on our communication and collaboration. And, uh, I think we've set the tone for that. So, uh, moving forward, um, I'm optimistic.
Every time we do a drill, we learn something new and something we have to, uh, think about. So, you know, actually drilling it the way that we have has been tremendously helpful. You know, you can, so if you do a drill and you're, you're during lunch, you can, you understand very quickly that the people in the cafeteria can't hear the announcement. So we've come up with alternatives, you know, because we've, we haven't just drilled when everybody's in class at a convenient time. We actually, you know, drilled during lunch at one point. Um, because we knew that if you're gonna go about this, you need to have a seriousness of purpose around it and not just pick the easy times to do a drill.
Great, so thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Dr. Michelle, thank you, Chief, um, for the information. At this time, if anybody would like to ask a couple of questions, that would be fine. I will need you to give your name and your address just for the minutes so we can take them. So if anybody, um, would, please, uh, feel free.
Um, sure, I can ask a volunteer right now. Just stand there.
Sure. I'll see you at the podium.
Um, so these are, I'm Shawna Torphy, thirty-five, Julian, Abington. So these are just the questions I had emailed over usually. I'm just gonna pick a couple because we have a good amount. And I know that we need to be somewhat free tonight, but my kind of main question just has to do really with the security resource officers and whether, how many there are, whether they're contracted to be in all of our schools for the whole duration of the school day and just like kind of what the plan is for that going forward.
So currently, we have two SROs, Officer White, Officer Hill. They're assigned to the schools and they split up. They visit all the different schools at various times throughout the day. Uh, they're not scheduled for obvious reasons, um, to make their appearances unpredictable. They don't spend their entire time at the school. Um, they spend, uh, throughout the different schools and right now do the staffing. They respond to calls as necessary.
Okay. And so is that something sort of upcoming school year? Can we anticipate that being the same or is there a way that we could present it? Have one each school?
Well, uh, uh, the anticipation for the future is we're, we're hiring new people on. So I have, I have hoped to have at least four more officers in the department by January. Uh, that will help alleviate, um, some of the troll calls for the SROs. They can just concentrate primarily on the schools, which is what they're meant to do. So we have shifted some of that back to, the primary focus will be on the schools.
And sorry if you didn't send this, but are they, they're not under contract to be at the schools full-time?
Uh, no, they're, they're assigned, uh, to their primary assignment is to schools. But because of the staffing of this right now, uh, we have to plug them into open access patrol as needed. Some days, almost two working, one might be assigned full-time to the school and the other might be working the second.
Okay. And then how do you determine kind of which school they're at? Is it just that they're mostly up at the most high school because that's where most students are or?
We kinda let them determine that on their own, that they work in collaboration with the different schools as to whether it would be at that point in the day.
So I, internally, what we've done, if I could, but I wonder, but we've asked our administration to, to tell the SROs of the different things that are going on around district, different events, and they get to those as they can. One of the, one of the important pieces is obviously the transition in and out of school. That's when a lot of, I mean, you've got a lot of moving parts. So, uh, I think the transitions, just being visible and being around, but then also they do try to go, uh, from event to event depending on their availability and what's going on in, in, in that day.
Okay, great. Uh, and then the other question I just wanted to focus on, uh, has to do with any, like, security consultants that we may have. Would you guys typically do that where you kind of like have a whole list of certain upgrades that you would maybe make if you had the funds to do so? Um, like I said, a wish list or anything along those lines?
So I spoke about that, working with the insurance company around risk assessment. And so those are the things that they look at. School security is one of them. They look at a number of things, um, including school security. So around, um, act, you know, easy access into the building, visibility in and out of the building, the hardware of doors and locking, you know, locking mechanisms. Um, those types of items would be part of a, a security risk assessment.
And, and the gentleman next to you, um, is also one of our consultants.
Okay. Um, and then I guess one more question just has to do, and how do, how do you guys make these decisions? Is there a subcommittee? Is, are the decisions handled here at school committee or?
What do you mean by decisions? Like which decisions?
If you were gonna make an upgrade or if you were gonna, if you needed more funding in order to maybe, you know, have more, you know, increased security, increased security equipment? How do, how do those?
So our budget in and of itself is handled during our meetings and our budget is, um, built for the school. I mean, to be quite frank, we probably don't have it in the school department budget to fund an off, like to fund the salary of a police officer. Um, to take that, we, we need the budget we have to fund the teachers and the staff we have so we don't have old, over like large classrooms, like thirty kids in a classroom. Um, in terms of funding for the town, that's done by the town, at town meetings and different department budgets. Um, the school department budget's handled at our meetings, but that'd be the only budget. There's in terms of if there was any recommendations that needed to be done, I'm guessing would become part of our budget or a special, um, um, capital planning kind of thing, yeah.
For example, the, uh, upgrade to the cameras in, the interior and exterior cameras at Beaverbrook and the Woodsdale and the key, key fob system. Um, once this building, we saw how beneficial it was in this building. Then we put it as a town meeting article and then it was funded through town meeting.
A lot of it is to, uh, talking with other school systems around best practices. We have, I think, seven or eight of us are actually Alice trainers. Am I right? I just, what would you think?
All of our administrators except two.
Okay, so that's ten.
And four police officers, uh, five police officers.
So we, we dove into it deeply enough that we are Alice trainers when it came time because, um, it can't be too, you know, we can't take it too seriously.
Which also resulted in a number of security upgrades at the time. Um, and actually the additional cameras and key fobs were one of the items that came out of, um, us going to the Alice training. Exterior, um, uh, speakers, sorry, exterior speakers was another item. Um, additional radios were, came out of the Alice train, out of the Alice instructor training. So, um, those were, that, those are some of the things that we have done.
Okay, I mean, I have kind of a lot, but maybe we can talk offline afterwards.
Yeah, and Shawna, like I said, always, and anybody, anybody watching, um, anybody here, feel free to reach out to the superintendent. Any questions, um, directly if he can answer them, he will. If he can't, he'll just probably politely let you know that it's something that he can't. But thank you for your questions. Thank you for letting us, for emailing us about it ahead of time, too. I appreciate it. Um, is there anybody else wanting to?
Well, certainly if there's anybody else in town that has any questions that they feel I might be able to answer, feel free to reach out and contact me directly.
Okay, great.
Chris, can I just give out a shout-out to the SROs that we do have and thank you for your commitment? I know that you're a few men down right now, but, um, Officer White, Officer Hill, and Officer Harlow. Um, they, they all work really hard. I mean, I sat at a eighth grade semi with, um, two of the three. Um, actually, I think all three were there at some point in time, but, um, they work really hard. And they not, they're not just a presence in a car or at a door. They truly are a presence for our families and the kids respond so well to them. They feel comfortable with them, not just we have security, but we have a person who cares. Um, I know personally, conversations in my household around dinnertime are oftentimes around the conversations that they've had with, you know, their SROs at lunchtime, things like that. So, um, you know, the world is not perfect by any stretch and there's so much we could do. But those officers right there, um, put a lot into what they do, what they are able to accomplish. And as a parent, I definitely appreciate the personal touch that they bring to the job that they have.
Appreciate the feedback, it's good to hear.
Any, thank you, Heidi. Does anybody else have anything on that? I don't. Okay. Well, Chief, I think everybody echoes what Heidi just said as well, but thank you for your time. I know you're very busy, appreciate you coming here, appreciate you making yourself available. Um, so thank you very much, have a great night.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're, as I mentioned, we're gonna jump a little bit. Um, we're gonna jump to, um, report of the Director of Student Services, Dr. Robbins. Um, if you wanted to do the announcement of the Special Education Educator of the Year Award by CPAC, I'm gonna do that now, thank you.
I should mention, um, COVID quarantine, I just ask if you have a hard time hearing.
See what the mic should be good, thank you.
Oh, great, great. Um, I should also mention, um, Brenda Miele is, is with me and she is the Chair of the CPAC. And so what we're doing tonight is we are awarding the Excellence in Special Education award. Uh, this is the first time that we're offering this award, but it was something that a lot of community members felt was a long time in coming in terms of, uh, recognizing the unique contributions that are made by our special educators who are tasked with, um, with, um, undertaking sort of like the most challenging task of, of making vulnerable learners make progress each day. So what we did is we, um, put a survey out to the community, uh, for nominations to nominate a, 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 a special educator who would, who embodied access. And, uh, we received thirty-seven nominations and, uh, our winner tonight, well, not for a second, uh, won the majority of those. Um, but one thing I'll say, as just someone who's close to the Special Education Department, is it was, it came as no surprise. Uh, so the individual we're honoring tonight is, is a leader in the department in every facet of the world. Um, she's someone who, um, mentors new members of the Special Education staff and keeps them, uh, very close to the, the principals, which by us, in terms of helping vulnerable students, um, make progress. She's someone who makes really long-term connections with families. I, I can, uh, I, I have many experiences of talking to high school-aged parents, uh, parents of high school students. And they'll talk back about some of the, um, the service providers they worked with when their child was in elementary school and, and this person's name inevitably comes up. She's someone who offers plenty of guidance and wisdom to myself in a, uh, in a district level role, um, but as well as to, uh, principals trying to manage their buildings. Uh, uh, this individual is actually about to embark on retirement. Uh, so we feel lucky that we're able to provide this award before, uh, she left us. So our winner tonight is Margaret Zabriano. Um, you know, I feel like the award, the award doesn't do justice to all that she's contributed to our community, um, but it is a small token. And, um, my thanks to Margaret on behalf of all the families who have children with disabilities and just all that she's offered to our staff. And I'll turn it over to Brenda, who's, um, uh, sharing the dish right now.
So as a parent of a child with special needs, uh, super important to go connect with that person. So I just wanna give you the score.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure to work with the students in Abington and to be able to choose a career that was my passion and to help these kids access the curriculum and be a part of this leadership team. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Julie, finally. Thank you, James. He's also, he's also a reporter. James, stick around though, just because you have the EL department update after. Jonathan, why don't you go ahead? We'll get back in order. All right. Jonathan Vaughn for the Abington High School Revisions to the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three High School Student Handbook.
Good evening, folks. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present the substantive changes to the student handbook for the next school year. Uh, thank in advance to my, uh, school council for meeting with us twice in May and June. First, to look at the proposed changes, then discuss and vote on the changes in June. Um, the following proposed substantive changes are, uh, from the vote of school council on June ninth. Uh, the first item in front of you is to add some language to, um, what we currently have in the handbook regarding the definition and requirements for detention. The added language is that the student is required to get over their cell phone to the main office staff prior to serving the detention. That is a change just to make attention what it is at time for reflection and inconvenient for our students. Um, the next item is to add, given that we have E-Hall Pass that you may be familiar with from prior presentations, there are four codes of behavior outlined in the Code of Conduct, A, B, C, and D. And we would just like to add E-Hall Pass restrictions as a possible, uh, option for, uh, sanction for misbehavior or consequences in the student handbook under each four of the codes, something that we would apply as needed depending on merits of the student's circumstance. The next item is related to the dress code. The contents of the dress code have not changed, but it was requested the school council to add some language to indicate to students that if they feel like they have been inappropriately or incorrectly asked or addressed on, on their dress code, that they may speak to the administration, uh, to either me, the principal, or the assistant principal regarding any dress code concerns that arise. The next item relates to academic integrity and changing the language to include that if student cheating will initially receive a zero for the assignment. And then it adds later on, upon reflection and meeting with the teacher, guidance counselor, and or assistant principal, another assignment may be offered for a student to earn back some or all credit for the initial assignment. The rationale for that is it's first of all reflective of the current practice in place in the school. Plus, we wanna make sure the consequence for someone not doing their assignment is to do their assignment and to do a bomb. That if we feel if an assignment's important enough for a student to complete, get feedback on in their growth, they need to do it even if they make, uh, mistake of plagiarizing or incorrectly paraphrasing other people's work. Next, related to absences, this is just to change to also reflect current practice. The old language required a written note each day of an absence. We have just amended that to allow parents to call in their student absence. Again, just current with, uh, uh, to, to be consistent with current practice. And/or a family can provide a note to the office the morning after. And then finally, the only thing that, uh, we wanted to address with the attendance piece is many of you know, for the past two years, we have withheld on any credit loss due to absences, obviously in the wake of COVID and COVID-related, uh, absences, as well as the emphasis on the school to stay home if anyone had even slight symptoms, both last year and this year. We will be reinstituting the credit loss policy next year. However, I wanted to just point out that where the previous language had wills has been replaced with mays. And this gives us the flexibility to better match the appropriate intervention for the family based on the needs of the student. What we've looked at through pretty good amount of study in the previous attendance years is that credit loss policy, the automatic credit loss policy and certain attendance metrics did not result in a change of attendance for students, but in fact unintentionally created more of a detriment to the student's standing, which was then discouraging them from coming to school more. So it had a contrary effect. However, there are certain circumstances where we may want to use this as a form of emphasis to help the student come to school if we feel that that's appropriate. Um, this also opens the door for really what we're trying to do is build a connection uh, between the school and the family to encourage, uh, positive, consistent attendance home. And I think I would just like to say to underscore all the changes in the way we handle pretty much anything at the schools, we really rely on and appreciate strong communication and cooperation with families and parents, um, to help bring about desire change and improvements we want our students. So those are the substantive changes proposed for the High School Student Handbook for the next school year.
Just have a question about the attendance loss. So with the sort of changes to the absences, what is considered an unexcused absence? Like I know this year, like just a phone call didn't always work. Sometimes if you didn't have like a doctor's note, so I know that that's kind of changing. So as long as the parent calls to say the child is out, is that automatically considered excused? Or is it unexcused just only if there's? there's no call or note submitted?
Yeah, it's a good question, uh, this group, and it'd be perfectly, if I could be clear about this in a fairly unclear, uh, situation. The obvious kind of no-brainer statement from schools, every day your kid comes to school, that's a good thing, right? We understand life happens and people need to keep their kids home. Um, if a student brings in a note from a dentist, doctor, that says so-and-so was home at doctor's permission, that is an excused absence. Uh, we just ask that parents communicate with us when the student's home. Um, that's not an excused absence. If you just call a student and say, my kid's not feeling good today, I'm keeping him home on Tuesday, June twenty-first. Thank you. That's good for us to know. That's just good communication for us to know what's going on. If a student is out five consecutive days, we may require a doctor's note to just understand that the student is well enough to attend school and not be in a situation where they're potentially getting other people sick.
Right.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
I think it's more of, you know, the parent calls to say, hey, my kid's not going to be here for the next three days, so we're going to Disney World. Does that count as an excused absence because they called or do you count that as an unexcused?
That's a great question. It does not count as an excused absence. It just means we know why your student won't be here, so we won't, if we're on top of that.
So there's a threshold even with the phone call of what's excused and what's unexcused?
Correct. So I mean, if you consider the students have their number of days, we don't encourage that they use it again. Every day that comes, good thing. We can't stop families if they take their kid to go somewhere. Um, I think it's just a matter of us knowing about it to not call on a day-to-day basis to say, your kid's absent, when the parents like that. They'll jut Monday where they were.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I have a question on that too. Um, I, I would love to think we don't have to think about this ever again, but if a child gets sent home on quarantine, I mean, clearly the school knows. So we, do parents need to call? Do they need to follow up? Or can you pretty much say that piece of paper that went home, the school understands that they will be back on such and such a day?
If the school in particular communicates to the family, we are sending your student home because of symptoms, because of quarantine, whenever the school authors the reason for the absence, we are aware. We excuse that especially for medical reasons. If we say you have to be home for this number of days, those would be excused absences.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barca, ask you a quick one?
Of course.
What's buyback option?
So buyback is, um, it's language that existed in the handbook. Let's go back to twenty-nineteen, that if a student crossed the threshold of days, that what they can do is opt in for a buyback, which says for a period of five consecutive school days, they'd be on time to school, on time to every class, and at the end of those five days, would buyback one unexcused absence to get under the credit loss threshold.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, and this is just around the dress code, and I apologize, I know this isn't part of what was being modified. I was just curious that an inappropriate clothing item, hoods, I mean, is that really something like, I know personally my kids, all they wear is like hooded sweatshirts, so are those not technically allowed? I was just curious to read that.
Yeah, the operating language here is reasonable, you know, I think for anything, right? I mean spiked collars aren't really a common thing, but until it's a problem, you know, it's a problem. Um, so many of our kids wear hooded swe- sweaters, it's, if the teacher asks them to take it off, we ask that they listen, but it's not really a thing.
Part of it too is the eyes, is sometimes depending on the kid or the school, they wear it so low that you can't see their eyes.
Right, I guess my question is, is there kid, like, is it just mean like you can't have the hood on?
I think that's what it means.
That's what I, that's what I took, because I had the same thought when I read this at first.
And that having been said, we're lucky, fortunate to have a school small enough when the students doing that, because they're, oh, there's so-and-so with it. We know who they are. So that helps in that sense.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other second? Okay, Daniel.
Mine is on the, um, E-Pass restrictions. And so one of the few interesting positives of hybrid learning and cohorts last year was that students mysteriously stopped needing to go to the bathroom because they had very few friends in the building at that time that they could meet out in the halls and take some strolls with and go to the bathroom. So they, um, they stayed in class, which was awesome. Um, I'm just wondering, do we flag frequent flyers who are in the halls all the time? Do we have a system in place for that? And is it common practice to let their adults at home know that they are out in the halls every class instead of being in the class?
Yes, all of the above. Uh, we don't actively monitor E-Hall Pass on a day-to-day basis. Um, but I'd say pre-E-Hall Pass, we'd have a sense of the school, if a kid needed to or asked to go leave the classroom several times throughout the day, we have the data to, to establish that. Uh, on a student-by-student basis, we do have those conversations with students, and one of the specific reasons this is in here is we can restrict the number of passes, the locations that a student requests to go to. Um, we can also restrict what's called eighteve polarity. So if you and Heidi had a, an issue, we can make sure neither of you are in the hall at the same time, um, through E-Hall Pass or you guys are the best of friends and we want to make sure the two of you are never in the hall at the same time. Um, we can, we can do that. Um, and it does allow us to, in circumstances, um, instead of saying your kid's out of Class A locked, to say your student missed seventy minutes of instruction this week by being out in halls, bathroom, nurse, et cetera, and to just put some, you know, hard numbers behind that. And as always, we almost always need really rely on the parent to emphasize the importance of being, um, in class at home to do that. So it's not just something that's done without communicating.
Yeah, good.
Any other second? So I'll be looking for a motion to, I'll change, turn the page real quick. Motion to approve the revisions to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three High School Student Handbook as presented.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Call in favor?
I have one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Could I just add one thing I failed to mention in the meeting. Uh, Ms. Clemence, the assistant principal, uh, reached out to our student council and our students actually met over the course of several weeks during their bridge walks to revise the handbook section by section and provide some of this language. So I failed to mention their work at the beginning, but it was very nice to have, um, a small group of students inform and suggest changes to the student handbook.
No, that's great. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Dr. Robbins, I'm going to go back to you. Um, I didn't realize there was a small thing on the, on the second page. I was about to had you finish up, uh, EL department update?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Just let it get, here we go, it's getting darker now. When I be right, James? Yep, thank you.
So I will be, um, presenting on behalf of the ELE department, um, an acronym for English Language Education. So this is the department that, um, provides the English language instruction for English learners. In other words, are students whose native language includes any language other than English. Um, so tonight, I'm just going to, I'm going to explain a bit about the student population that is served, um, by this program. I'm going to talk a little bit about the demographics and how they've changed over time. I'm going to, um, highlight a few successes over the past school year and then speak to, um, some future directions for the program, and then please just let me know if you have questions at any point. So, uh, just so you know who's involved, so I work, I personally work closely with Elizabeth DePry, who serves as the ELE, uh, director and the access test coordinator for the department. So she is working diligently always, uh, on behalf of English learners. And, um, all of the successes the department can be attributed, uh, to her and the other members of the ELE staff. Um, so in addition to Elizabeth, um, who are the other folks involved in the ELE department? So you should note, at the Abington High School, we currently have one teacher and one tutor. Um, at the Abington Middle School, we have one full-time teacher, a teacher who serves the role of a point-six teacher, and that actually happens to be our ELE director, um, and one tutor. Um, at the Woodsdale Elementary School, we have a teacher and a tutor, and at Beaverbrook Elementary School, we have two teachers and one tutor. Um, at the Abington Early Education Program, our preschool, we actually don't have any formally assigned staff, um, but our ELE director does the, um, the supervision of students at that level. Um, just, just for those who aren't aware, the, the way that the teachers operate differently than the tutors are that the, um, teachers actually provide direct, uh, English as a second language instruction, uh, to help facilitate, um, English language growth. So like, so by that we mean, um, growth in vocabulary, the, the ability to articulate their thoughts in English, um, their use of appropriate grammar and mechanics, um, strategies to, to, uh, gather information about the English language. So that all takes place from the teacher through ESL instruction, and the, and the role our tutors serve is that they support our English learner students in the general education classrooms, um, in, in sort of a, uh, in a support role. So this means clarifying information and, um, helping them gather information that they might need. So tutors support in-class, teachers support ESL instruction outside of class. Um, one thing to know as well is that during the upcoming year, um, we're adding two additional, um, teachers, one of which that will be added full-time to the Beaverbrook and, um, one teacher that'll be shared between, um, the Woodsdale Elementary School and the middle school. So that just gives you a sense of, um, how many staff that are involved. Um, so just a, a bit, um, this is a topic that some folks may just not know a lot about. Um, so just to kind of explain a bit about this. So, um, what's an English learner? Um, so this is a student who does not speak English or whose native language is not English, and who's currently able to perform, um, who's not currently able to perform ordinary classroom work in English. How do we identify these students? So, um, when students register, we have them, uh, fill out home language surveys, and when a, when a, a family indicates that a language is spoken in the home other than English, we have these students participate in access testing, which tells us their level of, uh, English aptitude and competency and fluency, and if they achieve at a certain level, we, we draw the conclusion that their English skills are intact and self-sufficient, and they don't require ESL instruction. But if they, if they score, um, if they take the access score, uh, access test and get a, a score of one, a level one, two, or three, then they'll get some degree of ESL services. Um, so there are also former English learners, and we're required to, um, uh, not necessarily service this population, but track their progress throughout the school. So these are students who met DESI qualifications to exit E-L-E services, so they've got intact, fluent English language capacity. Um, but we closely monitor them for four years after exiting ELE services, um, and the ELE teachers monitor their progress. So at the end of each year, we'll take a look at, you know, progress reports, uh, report cards, and teacher input to make sure that they're kind of adapting to, uh, to the, to their program and just making meaningful progress. Um, and the students who are, uh, most impacted by language differences are referred to as SLIF students. So, um, these are students with limited or, or, um, interrupted formal education. So think of a, a student who's, um, coming from a country, um, different than ours in terms of educational standards, and so they may be at a chrono, they may be at like a chronological age sixteen, but they will have participated in say like four or five years of formal school. So they have, uh, just limited or interrupted language. So for these students, we have to think really flexibly, and they're provided with programming that other English learners are not provided. Your typical English learner will just get, um, ESL instruction to supplement all the other math, ELA, science, social study instructions that all the other students are getting. Look at that, and some ESL to build English. But for, in the case of SLIF students, um, we, um, we have permission to think really flexibly, and sometimes we can replace out classes such as science and social studies with, um, more time with a reading specialist or, um, or kind of double the dosage of, uh, ELA instruction. So with SLIF students, we can think really flexibly to just try to help them, uh, reach pace, uh, reach the level of other students who are their age. Um, so the approach to servicing, uh, English learners that our district adopts is called, uh, Sheltered English Immersion, which is the DESI recommended approach to educating these students. Um, and, uh, just some details about the Sheltered English Immersion approach. Um, so all academic content areas are SEI endorsed, um, Sheltered English Immersion endorsed. And basically what this is, is it means that they use strategies, um, to build, um, language fluency in their content area classes. So this is, so imagine a, a math teacher who like kind of at first blush, you might think of as someone not having a ton of responsibility in terms of building like language capacity. If you take an SEI approach, it really prioritizes language as something that requires direct instruction. So this is like kind of previewing new vocabulary, um, using it multiple times in multiple different ways, um, and just sort of a handful of other language-oriented strategies to make it so that folks who are vulnerable in English language can still have success in the curriculum. Um, so all student, um, all, all of our English learners take classes that are taught by certified, um, ESL teachers for their ESL. So in other words, in their ESL classes, um, when they, uh, when they receive ESL instruction, it's by certified teachers, um, and this involves direct explicit instruction in learning English language. Um, and then when they go on to other academic content areas, the classes are taught by folks who are certified in the Sheltered English Immersion approach. So really kind of demystifying language. So the idea is that throughout their day, English learners, as well as all students, are having like a really language-enriched experience, uh, to make it so that language differences don't, um, put English learners at a huge disadvantage. That's the big, that's the big idea of the approach. So a bit, um, the interesting part of the, uh, ELE department is really the, the change in demographics. So something you should know is that Abington currently has two-hundred-and-three English learners, uh, fifty-four, uh, formal, uh, former English learners, and, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty-one students whose first language is not English. Um, English learners make up about nine-point-five percent of Abington's total student population, and English learners and former English learners make up almost twelve percent of Abington's total population of students. Um, seventy-five percent of English learners in Abington speak Portuguese as their first language, and twenty-five percent of English learners speak other languages, and just some of the other commonly occurring languages are Spanish, Haitian Creole, Arabic, uh, Vietnamese, and other languages. Uh, over twenty-five percent of our ELs are in their first year in the United States, and our SLIF population is increasing among our newcomer group. And again, SLIF are the students with, uh, limited or interrupted, uh, language. Um, so now I'm just going to speak to some of the successes, um, that characterize the department. Um, so there's a incredibly strong student ELE teacher relationships, um, and this is just, uh, really valuable for our English learner students. Um, so not only do these teachers teach the language, they do a lot to help the students really adjust to American culture and what it's like to be a student in, in American school, um, in our school system. And they make sure to provide, um, uh, like, uh, social emotional strategies to help students who've experienced trauma as well. So not only are, is the, uh, ELE department providing like this language instruction, which is really their formal charge, they're, they're, uh, relating to these students in a really kind of like therapeutic, um, empowering way and helping these students just sort of cope with, with the massive adjustment in their life. Um, oftentimes the student, the students who are in, um, ESL classes will just, um, speak to how, how they find these spaces to be safe and comfortable and affirming, and, um, finding a place where they're more comfortable practicing English than they are in their typical gen ed classes. So it's just, um, just noting here that, um, that the English learners tend to find ESL classes to be safe spaces, and, uh, we're very happy that they feel this way, that there's a, there's a place where they do feel safe at all. Um, so we've, uh, there are a number of programs that I just want to very quickly highlight to, um, that in, that in my view and the department's view indicate progress for English learners. Um, one of which is by, um, strategic use of the, of some of the ESER grants. We've been able to provide, um, after-school tutoring, uh, for English learners. Um, so this is, uh, they're getting an opportunity to get extra English as a second language instruction and just support with their academics after-school hours. Additionally, um, uh, last year and this year, we're providing a, uh, ELE summer program. So in addition to the, um, extended school year program for students with disabilities and the credit recruitment program for our secondary age students, we provide, um, ESL instruction for English learners. Um, so this is, uh, just an opportunity again for them to, um, develop greater, um, English language fluency. It is additionally, just for some, uh, we, we've had some nice like, um, ELE field trips this year. So this is connecting, uh, English learners of different ages to one another. So, um, at our Woodsdale Elementary School, we have a number of, uh, newcomer English, uh, English learners who really look up to our high school soccer learners who really look up to our high school soccer players. So, so about a month ago, we arranged for them to kind of come visit with our high school students, have like a pizza lunch with them, play soccer with them, and just, just hear from the, the soccer team as well as members of the soccer team who are English learners themselves about like, you know, things that they did to, to help themselves in school. So it was just sort of a nice connection between English learners. So those are just some of the student programs that we think have been successful over the past year. And then additionally, we, we've done a bunch to really try to engage the families of English learners to feel like they have a stake in our school district and they can offer us input which we could put into practice. So we've, we have a fairly, we have a very active LPAC, which just like our, the CPAC we discussed earlier, this is an English learners parents advisory council. And this meets on a monthly basis and it started in the fall of 2020. And this is an opportunity for parents of English learners to get together and consult and to share ideas with the school district. Additionally, through cultural council grants from the, the towns department, we've been able to offer adult ESL classes. And this, so this makes it so that the, the families of our English learner students are more fluent in English. So therefore they can better partner with us to support the students. And additionally, our district's invested in a software called Talking Points, which is kind of like a text messaging service, but that does translation. And it, and it makes it just so that our staff are able to reach the families of English learners more directly. And we found that the response rate from families is just much, much greater. So those are just some things that the department is, is proud to have been a part of this year. And just a few things, just to point some future directions, some steps we'd like to take to just try to better service this population. So we're working on just developing a written curriculum that lines up with our gen, uh, genet curriculum for grades K to 12. That is a work in progress. Additionally, something that happens at the secondary level is sometimes English learners will move to our town who have been out of formal education for a bit and they'll be well behind in credits, but chronologically will be like age 18 and off to be graduating and so on. So when these students do arrive, it, it, it can be more common than we'd like for these students to, to drop out. So we're continuing to just look for, for ideas and ways of engaging these students so that they, so that we can offer them a quality education and they can stay motivated and staying connected to us. It's a challenge everywhere to service our SLIFE population, again, students with limited or interrupted formal education. And so we're going to be continuing to just work with surrounding districts to hear ideas that they have for servicing this population so that we can kind of get better results and hopefully get them to graduation. And something we're doing obviously for all students, but including English learners, is providing more social emotional support to them in their native language, when necessary and possible, but just in general. This year, we, we had a, what, what felt like a lucky situation. We have social work interns each year and one of our interns happened to be a native Portuguese speaker. And we had some newcomers at the elementary level who were having adjustment challenges. And she was able to actually change her location and change her site location and meet with these students and kind of make a meaningful connection. So we just want to see more of that. So that's some areas that we hope to be reporting progress on for the years ahead. So that is the formal presentation. Any questions?
Hi, do you mind if I just ask two quick ones?
Go ahead.
All right. James, first, I just want to comment that I love the field trip idea, the kids coming and going and hanging out with like mentors almost kind of thing. And also the adult ESL program, I've seen that in action here when we've been in the building in the evening. So those are a great thing. I just wanted to talk about, in one of the, you had a chart that had like the numbers and it looked like 20, July, 2019, looked like there was like the biggest jump anyway, at least year to year. And I know, so I know we have two new English language teachers coming on board, but correct me if I'm wrong, it's still probably not where we, in a perfect world where we want to be ratio wise, right?
Not the, not the perfect world.
Like do you, so I know that we can always see, we can have an idea who's coming in for kindergarten based on town census information. Is, is it possible to have an idea what the English language population may increase based on that or no, not as easy?
No, it's just a population that moves in and out. I'll let, I'll let James speak, you know, in more detail about it. But it seems that over the course of a school year, there's, there's in and out, you know, quite a bit.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely the case. We, the feeling I think within the department and so on and other members of staff is that it does feel like we're paying catch-up for the population. Because we always want to do right by them. So, so you know, so the committee administration-
Yeah, we had budget focused it, I know, the last couple of years especially, so yeah.
Exactly. So, so you feel like we go through the budget process and we've got a, a ratio that feels comfortable, like is in sync with, with the regional average. It feels like we can, we can provide recommended service time to our students.
Okay.
But then there will just be a, an influx of, of these families, of the families over the summer. Like, and just for example, most recently, the summer that led into this school year and we're in now, there were about 20 to 25 English learners who moved in and that's basically a caseload.
Yeah.
So, so, so we felt like we were going into the year feeling strong. And then we realized that, wow, a whole number of students who've moved in. And sometimes it's okay because it's, you know, we run K to 12, we pre-K to 12. And so the, the move in can be diffuse enough so that all the, all the providers can kind of absorb that impact. But the way it worked this past year is that the overwhelming majority just happened to be at the fifth and sixth grade level.
Okay.
So we felt like we were, you know, well equipped. And then there, it's like we were just paying catch-up. So.
Catch-up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hi, do you have any, anybody else? Hi, do you have some?
Did you have any questions?
I have maybe a comment after, but.
Well, I think you probably answered one of my questions with your last slide because I was wondering if we currently have a particular curriculum that we are using with our EL students? I'm going with no because it looks like you're in the process of creating one now.
Yeah, I would say our approach to curriculum is, is eclectic, right? But, but it's like strongly based on the REACH curriculum, which, which serves us most at the elementary level. So, so we make use of the, of the REACH curriculum and that covers us in a lot of ways, but it's, it, we're still having to draw in other resources. So yeah, to, you kind of summed it up.
And we're using this as a pullout model for the most part, right?
We, we are. Yep.
And then is there ever common planning time or do we do that in the future so that, you know, every, as we have the written curriculum, because I saw that you want to align it with standards, you know, are teachers on being given time to appropriately get together to discuss what it is these particular students need to learn, especially as they're moving back and forth between classrooms?
Right. So one thing, one thing we've arranged at a building level, of course, is, is common curriculum time among, among our educators. We do reckon that like, the point I think that you're getting at is that that can be sometimes imperfect for ELA staff just given that they have to flexibly service students at times that would conflict with common planning time. So, so while, while there is time that's available, it is also the case that our ELA staff don't always have the opportunity to avail themselves of that common planning time. But I think something that, just, you know, for the rationale that, that you're implying here, I, I think, you know, myself and building-based administrators can work closely with the staff to make sure that we are carving out time for, for more of this. So that's something that is, you know, is a focus of ours. But, you know, but you're speaking of something, it is, it is the case that ELA teachers at times don't have access to the common planning time.
All right. Thank you.
I guess I, my question is just wondering, overall, it's so tricky that our instruction helps them, but overall, the school climate and school community and them feeling like they fit in and are welcomed is so important too. I don't know if you'd be able to comment on that. Are we feeling like they're fitting in, in their regular classes? I love that they feel safe in their ELA classes when they're in with general ed in the regular classroom. Or I, is your overall feel like there's a good blend and they're getting acclimated and assimilated into those classrooms? Or are we doing, do we have a, is there a need to work on that a little bit?
I would, I would say like that there's definitely no question, you know, value added by the fact that our demographics have changed to include more English learners, right? Because it's just more students of diverse backgrounds. So that students are getting the opportunity to interact with people different from themselves. And that should theoretically make them more empathic and so on, right? So I think there's a good opportunity here. And one thing I would say too is that the teachers are getting better at being able to accommodate English learners, including newcomer, newcomer English learners. And because, because they're becoming more skilled at that, that makes it so that we don't have to group the English learners together as much in class. So it's, so there, there are times where we fall, we, we fall short of that. And so you'd have a lot of English learners to kind of cluster together and then just native English speakers kind of working separately. But I'd say there's been positive growth in that. And then just because students can be like grouped heterogenously, it makes it so that just sort of, there's more kind of authentic connection there. I'd say just because the demographics are changing, that it, it just becomes, there's more sense of norm, like more sense of familiarity and normalcy because of that. And so I, so I think, I, so I do think that's good. I, I think there's always work to be done on that. And I, and I think, and I think, you know, us as administrators and stuff are very much want to target that work and do more. But what I, what I definitely don't see are any like evidence of things to be alarmed about in terms of overt evidence of mistreatment of others because of their cultural background and so on. I think, I think there's, yeah, work to be done. I think because teachers are feeling more comfortable servicing English learners, that allows for more heterogeneous grouping. So those are, yeah, those are my impressions on the topic.
So do we, I heard the word mentor. Do we have, do, do our kids who are just English speakers, do they, from a young age, do we kind of have that in place where part of the classroom routine is, is working on those skills, the empathy and welcoming of other kids from different backgrounds? Or is it just something that we kind of pull kids, we flag kids that we think would welcome them and work well with them? Do we have any, anything in place?
Yes, just to speak, to, to some of that. So it, it is the case that as, as a district and as school buildings, we've made it a case, we've made it important to, to have as part of our curriculum kind of like social skills, like opportunities for affirmation, opportunities for teaching staff to check in with students. A lot of times spent with morning circles and morning meetings. So, so teachers know where they're at and kids can talk about themselves and understand and so on. So I would, you know, like, so a lot of our social emotional learning efforts have, have really targeted that. If not, if not directly targeting cultural differences, targeting just the fact that we need to accept and integrate others. So, so that work is going on. I would, you know, I would say, I would say doing more to target just sort of cultural differences is something. I think there's a, a lot of people would be happy to do that. And I think it's something we could, we could do and grow on.
Sure. I just think it's awesome. I celebrate the English learners and their journey to acquire more language. And I hope that our students admire and recognize that multiple intelligence of already knowing their language, learning English, and that kind of the leg up they have on some of our kids. So that's great. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you very much, Top Robbins. Appreciate your time. All right. We're gonna skip, we're gonna, we already did item A in their part of superintendent schools. So item B, consideration of revisions to the agreement between Abington Public Schools and Abington Community Access and Media.
So the committee members, this is exactly what you saw earlier that was, that was sent to you prior to this meeting. It's a five-year agreement with Cable. Just a little bit of background. This is a successor agreement, believe it or not. This building's been open for five years. Cable's been renting for five years. And the success of Cable is, is our success. It's a win-win. We have a good symbiotic relationship with Cable. We've got interns like Jack behind the camera, who benefit from working in, in the Cable studio with, with Kevin and Matt. And they've got a number of students. And these students really grow and develop their skills. Because if you think of media production, I mean, there's, there's editing and there's, there are technical aspects. It's not just the work behind the camera. There's a whole production that our students get involved in. So Cable came to us, we, we met with them. They came looking for a reduced rate. The rate that was previously charged was twice this. This is $1,250 per month. The reason to continue to, to charge Cable to be, to be a part of the building is because there are also expenses, that the heat, the lights, the air conditioning, the alarm system, the, the technical support that they get, the maintenance, the custodial. So to have this balance, to find an appropriate rental agreement for them is the, is the appropriate, you know, fiscally responsible thing for us to do. And, and yet work closely with Cable so that they can continue to benefit the community. I mean, you know that they are a part of the democratic process because they publish what's going on at our board meetings for the, for the different boards in town. And, and they publish that, you know, for the public. So it helps with Abington's transparency. So trying to find, excuse me, perfect balance with this agreement, we, we've cut it in half. And we think, and I believe that Cable also thinks this, this is a fair agreement. And so I'll answer any questions that you have. And then if you're willing to consider it, I'd, I'd ask you to, to consider this agreement.
And our liaison was part of the, you talked about.
Yep. Jessica was a part of this. So was Peter Walters. I should thank them. I should thank Jessica in particular for being the school committee's liaison to the Abington Cable.
I don't have any questions. I mean, I just want to, it's, I think it's apparent to most people that have seen what Abington County's become over the last five years, how much it's grown. I mean, there's everything now. You can watch half of it on YouTube as it's happening. The concerts, the, obviously the games, but the concerts at any level, any building. So I just want to, I, I know it was, it took, it was, at, at first, it was what it was. But I just want to thank Kevin Tachi for helping to build, to continue to build what was there and make it better every year as we move along. All the interns that have helped out, they've been fantastic. So I'm good with everything here. But if anybody else wants to ask anything.
Sorry, I should mention it has been vetted by Town Council prior to you seeing it.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
All right, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the revisions, well, to the agreement between Abington Public Schools and Abington Community Access and Media as presented. I'll make the motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Should go to the next one.
So the next I have for you, the Abington Public Schools laptop care and use policy. This is for grades five through 12. And those are, those are the ages that our students all have laptops. So there's some care precautions, how to take care of your screen, expectations, using the laptop outside of school. Talks about filtering. And that's, you know, those are pretty common sense type pieces of information. The, the part that I want to make sure to make the committee aware of is, is on this, on the third page where it talks about the following approximate cost for laptop parts and replacements. Say it all the time, we are very lucky. Abington, Abington students, Abington kids are good kids. So we have not had a lot of damage to the computers. They've been very responsible with, with the care and the upkeep and the way that they handle the computers. Not everybody's perfect. There are a smaller number of individuals who continue to run into the same problems with screens or keyboards. Generally, everybody's good, but there's a couple of people that, you know, really need to be held accountable that are for the care of school property and their laptops. So what you see here is the cost to replace the device. $450 to replace the screen, $85. To replace a keyboard is $40. This is for those individuals who struggle with responsive behavior with a laptop. It's become a tool that people need so they can learn. And at the same time, you know, recovering some of the costs when somebody has not been responsible in a reasonable way is really what this policy is about. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why, how come you guys don't collect the laptops at the end of the school year? year? And, you know, kind of recondition them or clean them up?
So there's, there is an ongoing cycle of them being reconditioned and cleaned up. A lot of the work happens the moment they come into the, they turn on and they're engaged with the wifi. A lot of those things happen. A lot of it's done remotely and there isn't a need, um, to be honest with the number of computers we have, the number of people we have, how responsible our kids have been with them. This is the most efficient and effective way to, to manage all students five through 12 having computers. But, and it's a great question, but that's why.
No, just a comment. From what I've heard, I think we've been very flexible and I think it's important for people to learn to treat expensive equipment responsibly. And it's a privilege to be able to use that, so.
I think in going over the agenda with you two, this isn't, it's, you kind of described it here, but it's gotta be, you'll know if there's malicious intent, if there's not malicious intent, sort of thing, so.
Okay.
So, all right, that's how I'm looking for a motion to approve the revision to the Abington Public Schools Laptop Care and Use Policy Guide, a resource for students and parents and guardians as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, go ahead.
So, uh, public service announcement under my section. I think you're aware that, um, we communicate with everybody that, that Jessie Clements, the Assistant Principal here at Abington High School is going on and she has a curriculum position in the Bourne Public Schools for the next school year. So we immediately advertised, uh, for an interim person because we want to do a thoughtful search, um, at the right time. Right now is not the right time. The last two weeks of June, uh, is not the time for us to find, um, a long-term solution. So, um, that's taken place. Want, and we'll do that, um, thorough and thoughtful and deeper search, um, soon as we get underway in the next school year. Generally, the best time of year is, 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 um, just after the holidays, maybe, uh, beginning of January. So that's, I want to make sure, I want to make sure, Mandy, for beware.
So what are we gonna do in the meantime?
Find an interim.
Okay.
When do you anticipate having one?
Hopefully the next week.
Okay.
Or two.
Okay.
Was, it was posted internally and externally?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a closing date?
Last Friday.
Last Friday?
Well, you know, two, three days ago, 17th, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't want to wait around.
Nope.
Thank you. Um, moving on, I'm part of the Assistant Superintendent Schools, um, Dr. Michelle, um, cafeteria.
Thank you. Yep, I have a number of items due tonight. The first one is the cafeteria association collective bargaining agreement. And when they did job descriptions, I've spent, um, the last couple of months working with members of the association, Bernie Darcy, who's the food service director, who's retiring at the end of this month, and Jean Condon, who is currently the manager of nutrition and operations, uh, who is becoming food service director. I've been meeting with them and members of the association. Um, it became evident, um, over the last couple of years, especially when we moved into this building, that, uh, the jobs of the cafeteria staff had really changed and, uh, the responsibilities and the roles had really changed as we do more cooking here and in each of the buildings. So if, um, you have, uh, new job descriptions along with, uh, new salary scales that are, again, we did a, uh, we compared with other school districts in the area as well as kind of a, a market for these types of positions. And I have presented to you, um, what I believe to be a fair compensation package. It's also worth noting that the food service organ is self-funded, so the, these increases will come out of the food service.
Does anybody have any questions? She, Dr. Michelle, you noted to us as well earlier, so.
Yeah.
Wendy, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't really have a question. It's just that the next, the next, um, part of this is to do with the lunch increase. So, I mean, if the food service budget is, um, is used and it like takes care of all the employees for the food service, I don't know, I just feel bad about like the kids, not the kids, but like that the programs just keeps going up every year.
So we don't set the price, so I was gonna talk about that when we get to the, to that item. We don't set the price for the, for the, what we charge for foods, for school lunch, reduced lunch or breakfast or, uh, um, milk. That's actually set by the state and it's based on, um, our percentage of free and reduced lunch and our reimbursement rates. So the state sets our, what we should be charging or what we need to charge. So as of right now, the state actually says that we should be charging $3, $3.30 for a meal. But there's also a caveat that says you don't need to increase, you're, you don't have to increase more than 10 cents in a given year. So what happens is you only increase 10 cents and then next year, the state says you have to spend $3.40. So you never make up that gap, which if you never make up that gap, you never make up the gap. However, um, the recommendation is that we go from $2.75 to $3 for, for a meal, going up 25 cents, so partially the way to $3, to $3.30, um, up 25 cents as opposed to, um, 55, 60 cents. So that doesn't, that is not supporting the increase in the cafeteria contract, actually two separate items.
Thank you.
All right, let's move, we'll, um, look at the cafeter, the cafeteria CBA first.
Yep.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the contract proposal, the, a motion to approve the job descriptions and contract proposal for the Abington Cafeteria Association for fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '25 as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, um, so, go ahead.
Yep, so the second, my second item was around the increase in, um, meal prices. As you know, the last two years, um, meals have been free for all students. And, uh, we don't, at this point, believe that they will be free next year, so we're looking to, for your consideration of an increase for, um, for, uh, school lunch, school breakfast, and, uh, there's no increase for reduced lunch or milk.
The, um, I just, so this is almost a inc, an increase next year is off of what it would have been three years prior, right?
Well, that's, I mean, that's the thing, yes. So I believe that's why our target is $3.30.
Okay.
Because we haven't, no one's moved their prices because we haven't charged.
You said you don't believe.
Just 'cause there a faint glimmer of hope anywhere?
Yeah, is there? And 1% chance that they're gonna?
There are, yes, there are currently bills at both the state and the federal level, um, for free breakfast and lunch for next year, for universal free. But as of today, there is, there's nothing that's been approved.
Are there things we can do to encourage people to move in that direction?
Um, yeah, I mean, that would be state legislatures, um, state and federal legislatures, legislators. Um, I could find out some more information on what those bills are currently.
I have a question about that too. So if they do during the summer, then the state says, um, okay, we're gonna give free lunch, do we have to have a meeting about that or does that just come into effect?
Yeah, that would just come into effect.
Okay, so like, what if there's like a give and a take? Do you know what I mean? Like, we'll give you free lunch if we can have all your, I don't know, kids' minds forever. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. You know, I mean, can we know about it a little bit beforehand to see what the, what exactly, you know, the give and take is? Cause there's definitely gonna be one.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's either the, if the lunch is approved or it's not.
Yeah, if we receive federal funding for free lunch, I mean, it would be.
The last two years.
Right. It's, it's funded, it, that is funded federally.
Right.
So I guess would it be any agreement that you're talking about, Wendy, would that just, that wouldn't be at the local level? It would, the state, like Desi would say, yes, we agree to new conditions.
Or we're gonna take this, it's also federal fund, so whatever, um, it would be part of the federal funding package at the state and federal level. It wouldn't, um, it's not like getting an S or grade, we wouldn't be getting a grant. It would be that, what happens now is we keep track of how many meals are received every day, that number submitted to the state every month, and then the state reimburses us for those meals.
That's how it's handled now?
Correct. That's how it's handled as, and that's how it's handled when students receive a free lunch, even outside of.
Okay, gotcha. Any other questions?
So with the increase, do they get, um, better products or is it gonna be the same products, just that the food is, is going up?
It's, it, it's the same lunch, the same options.
Yeah. I just feel bad because I don't think that like a lot of, um, parents have actually gotten an increase at, you know, their job level. And then I know it only sounds like a quarter to somebody, you know, I have one child, but somebody else, I have six, you know? And I know some people are too proud to, you know, try to get the reduced lunch, so.
And I would encourage people to do that, um, if they were, you know, no, it's a confidential process. And unlike when we were kids, you know, everyone goes through the lunch line and punches in the number. So I, I can remember when I was in school, the kids who got free lunch had a red ticket and would go through the line and get a free lunch. Now, parents put money on the account, so the kid behind you and the kid in front of you don't know whether your parents paid for that meal and the money's on your account or it's a free lunch. So it is a very confidential process. I'll also say that if you receive other subsidies from the state, you're automatically qualified to get a free lunch, um, and breakfast. So, um, that's, that's also an incentive to, um, if you need, if you're a family in need, to please sign up for those types of, um, subsidies.
Can you speak to how a parent could apply for the reduced lunch through Abington?
Sure, so there's an application that comes out by the, it's a US, it's set by the United, USDA, uh, the, the guidelines for where the thresholds are. We'll have the application up on our website. You can, you fill out the application, you submit it, you submit it to the food service director and it's approved at that level. So again, it is a confidential process. The principals don't know, the cafeterias don't know. It is the food service director that does the approval, um, for that. And again, we have found that many families receive other services in the state and then they're directly qualified, direct, it's called a direct certification for a free lunch in school.
Okay.
Am I correct in thinking that if there's a certain percentage of families that qualify, it actually, school districts can qualify? Or is that not how that works?
So, yes, it, it's a high.
But it's a high percentage?
It's a high percentage.
Okay. Just wanted, cause I know that there are districts, so I didn't want people to think that it was something we had the power to affect and we don't.
I don't know what the exact number is, but if you have a very high percentage of families that qualify for free lunch, then all students in the, in the district receive their lunch. But we are not in that.
We are not one.
Yep.
So can I ask another question then? So, um, the USDA is part of the federal government and they are, you know, telling Abington, you should pay $3.30 or whatever. But another town like in the North Shore, for instance, um, they wouldn't have to pay anything, right? Like if, if their students get qualified, mostly qualified, then that whole district is free from having to pay?
So what, so I think we have to step back for a second, explain how the process works. So, um, there are a number of ways you can get your lunch. So if you pay, you can make me pay $3, you get your, you get your lunch. The state, the federal government still subsidizes the cost of that meal, cause it actually costs us more than $3 to make that meal. If you receive a free, if you qualify for free lunch or reduced lunch, that also gets submitted. It, let's say the reimbursement rate for Abington, and it is different in different, um, communities depending on where you demographically are, um, they reimburse you minus the 40 cents of the reduced lunch up to the, um, free lunch amount. If your district has a majority of students who qualify for free lunch, a great majority, I don't know the exact percentage, then every student in that district then qualifies for free lunch. So I go through the register, I get my meal, now the state's gonna give me $4 for that meal. But there's a handful of Boston, Brockton, Springfield, and Bedford that qualify for the, um, for the whole district receiving free breakfast and lunch. It's about universal breakfast and lunch.
I got you. Thanks for explaining that. So what if, um, you know, we vote and it's a, it's a no vote? What happens then? Like who pays? Does it?
It can impact what the reimbursement that we receive from the state is, um, of the meals.
Do we know if that's a fact?
I know, I don't know about our increase right now. I know that is, it was in the past. We haven't charged for lunch in three years or two years, um, but it absolute, I mean, these, these are all predicated on your reimbursement rates. So if you don't pay high enough, if you're, don't contribute high enough, I would anticipate they would withhold some of your reimbursement. And it's not, oh, sorry. I'll also say that we get both money and product from the federal government. So we get food product from them. We get hamburgers, chicken.
And then they set the prices for us.
Me too.
Yeah, yep, but we get a lot of product through the, through the, um, lunch program, federal lunch program.
Seems like their hands in both pockets.
No, we get a dis, significantly discounted, sorry, food from the federal government.
It would cost more than $3 to make a nutritious meal for anybody in any home or any school system, but the, the government picks up some of the costs. I think they're, I think they're trying to keep the cost low and offer healthy foods.
I get what you're saying. I just don't think, I think that, I mean, this, before the, um, COVID, you know, this was, this has been before us basically every year. Do you know what I mean? So it is increasing. I remember, I'm sure you guys all do, it was like a buck when we went to school. So, um, I don't know, I mean, I just know that a lot of these, I don't know, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you for those answers, Dr. Michelle. Um, so at this time, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the, uh, school lunch prices as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am.
Dr. Michelle, last one.
My last item before you is one that you see every year. We call this landing the plane when we're, uh, making our last adjustments to the fiscal year, which ends on June 30th. So I have new, uh, final salary and expense allocations. This is a transfer that will occur in order to, um, satisfy salary and expense. So it's a transfer from, um, the expense account to the salary account and it makes the salary account $19,941,217, expense $6,537,596.
Been important to point out for anybody, this does not change our budget, it's just moving money through two different buckets.
Thank you, yes.
I'll be looking for a motion to approve, um, the final allocation of expenses for fiscal year 2022.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Um, so new business and establishment next school committee meeting. So there will probably be at least one over the summer, just in FYI. But we thought the next scheduled one will be the first day of school. Do I have that right? Wednesday, August 31st, 2022 at 7:00 PM here. I know there was one informational item I wanted to hit on, it was the school year bus applications. For anybody watching, those are due July 1st.
Please.
Please get them in by July 1st. It will make the lives of Dr. Michelle, Mrs. Greenlaw, Mrs. Minahan very much easier if those are received on time as the bus, as they start to map the bus routes on July 1st of Friday, so July 5th. So if you can, please get those in as soon as possible. They're available on the school's website, correct? Yeah, so. And if you, if you need to fill out an application, please, um, fill one out.
And you can pay them as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, that was the one I wanted to add. Did you want to, can I do one more quickly?
Yep.
Um, I want to thank the, um, Abington Music Parents. So two amazing things happened. One is they bought band uniforms. They really cool, the other cool thing, they bought them band uniforms, it was a $16,000 purchase, but there are also 43 students to fill those band uniforms. So it's a resurgence of the band.
Yeah.
So.
It's coming back, it's very exciting.
And I guess just for us anyway. And I guess, just for us anyway, there is a listing of our school committee dates for next year.
Chris, I did wanna say, I think you said August 31st at 7:00. It's listed here at 6:30. I'm not sure if you said that out loud.
Seven, it'll be, it'll be seven unless something changes. That'll be where we'll deal with, right? So, or do we do it at 6:30? Cause it's the first day of school.
We've been changing it a little.
It'll be posted by August 29th, so. One of those two times and it'll be here unless anything just. Dates to remember, by the time some people see this, it might already happen, but Thursday is the last day of school. As we skip ahead to the, through the summer, Monday, August 29th, Teachers Report. Tuesday, August 30th is Professional Development Day for teachers. Wednesday, August 31st, grades one through 12 report back to school as well as our school committee meeting. There will be kindergarten orient, AEP and kindergarten orientation that week. No school on Friday, September 2nd or Monday, September 5th, which is Labor Day. And I believe kindergarten and the pre-k start the Tuesday after Labor Day. Yes, okay. So, and look at this, Sunday, September 18th, Abington Music Parents 42nd Annual Craft Fair. So mark accounts on that. There's no way I remember that right now. So we're gonna need that one on the, on the August, on the August agenda too. Does anybody else have anything or? So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and have a great summer, everybody.